I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council President Pro Tem Andrea Rukowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk Rukowski.
Councilman Godbout.
President.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Tem Rukowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Here.
President Hart.
Here.
Now moved to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. Is there anyone on my right? Yes.
Hi, Emily Baumann, resident of Westland. I am actually speaking on item B of the consent calendar and two, item two on the new business. One thing in talking to a number of people when I was sharing some of these things on the agenda tonight, there was a big concern with, and I kind of related this to similar to previous meeting, about a vision or a theme for Westland. If we're trying to encourage families and we're trying to raise families, is this the right festival to be having in our city? And that is a concern. Additionally, I noticed that on the sheet, it talked about a resolution that had to be done by the council in order to actually move this forward. That resolution was not in the packet that I saw online, as well as I did not see the new business item to, there's an adoption, and item two says adoption of prepared resolution recommending approval of a special one-day license. I did not see that in the agenda packet at all. So I guess I'm curious, how are we moving something forward and how are we depending on a resolution on a consent counter item when there's no supporting documentation or even the actual item, the actual resolutions weren't there? Neither was the resolution for a new business item one. There was no resolution. There was the document and the application for the one-day liquor license, but there was no resolution by council. So I guess I'm trying to connect these things because it just seems that they're very disconnected. And I am concerned, obviously, in speaking to a number of people that even live in the area, they're like, well, that's, it just doesn't seem as family-friendly as we'd like it to see. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll close comments on the agenda. It moved to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Support from Councilwoman Sampe. There was a question procedural matter. Mr. Grisco, can you address that?
Okay, so if this is pertaining to, is it, I'm sorry, what was the item that it was?
She had a question consent calendar item B and new business item two.
Say again, I'm sorry.
Consent calendar Bravo.
Bravo.
New, new items, number two.
Okay. So if that, if that has to do with the license issue, I believe that there is a pre-prepared resolution for that license that's included in the packet. And when I say that, I mean to say that the relevant licensing has its own resolution, I believe, that that pertains to.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held in August 21, 2023. Approval of request from Desi Santiago LLC 30712 Michigan Avenue for a public entertainment, entertainment license to host a Motor City Roots Festival at that location on September 17, 2023. Approval of annual ARX Alert Core software subscription with Tyler Technologies Incorporated to compile and provide data that is published on the Westland Police Department's Public Community Transparency Dashboard. The subscription term shall be for a one-year period in the amount of $30,450. Approval of fiscal year 2024 contract with Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation Contract to allocate the city of Westland's municipal and community credits to Nankin Transit for the transportation services that it provides, excuse me, for senior citizens and disabled individuals within the community. Amounts are $79,952 in municipal credits and $145,530 in community credits, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval to acquire one property located at 31905 through 31907 Roscommon, acquired under the CD BG and Home Program for resale to eligible first-time homebuyers and/or to remove blight and hold it for future redevelopment in exchange for the resulting public purpose. The Director of Housing and Community Development is authorized to sign the closing documents for this property on behalf of the city. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion from Councilman McDermott? Support from Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. New business.
Item one. Adoption of prepared resolution recommending approval of a special one-day liquor license application from Women of Evangelical Lutheran Church in America, Celebration Lutheran Church, located at 39375 Joy Road, in order to serve beer at their Oktoberfest event to be held at the church on October 7, 2023.
Motion from Pro Tem Rukowski, supported from Councilman Godbout. Is the petitioner here? All right, I see not. Any discussion from the maker? Any from the supporter? Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item two. Adoption of prepared resolution recommending approval of a special one-day liquor license application from We Are the Culture Creators nonprofit in order to serve beer at the Motor City Roots Festival event to be held at 30712 Michigan Avenue on September 17, 2023.
Motion from Councilman Hersberg. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilman McDermott. Is petitioner here? Please come up. And your name, sir?
Good evening. My name's Davin Stone. I'm the president of We Are Culture Creators. And what We Are Culture Creators is a community-based organization in the city of Detroit. What we have is we take a number of children who are from the neighborhood and we give them opportunities to express themselves in music, art, paint, sculpture, poetry. And we've been very successful at it. And the proceeds from this is, for us, a benefit to continue on the work that we've been doing thus far.
Okay, can you tell us about the event and what you're planning?
Well, it's going to be on the grounds of, you know, on the former Eloise. We just simply want to be able to serve our, serve drinks there. It's all going to be self-contained, within a tent, and it's pretty simple, actually. That's how I feel.
No, no worries, no worries. First of all, I'm going to turn to the council, see if they have any discussion. So anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Okay, so also, Mr. Hambrick, are you here? Can you come on up too? Mr. Hambrick, you represent Eloise, that's right.
I do.
Okay, very good. So when we talked about this before we want to put on the agenda, I just wanted to ask you again on record, is there's going to be no consumption of cannabis or marijuana products during this event, is that correct?
There is no consumption of marijuana or marijuana products at this event. It is strictly going to be liquor, right? Beer and liquor.
Can you, can you share with the council and the public what safeguards and controls you're putting in place to make sure this doesn't happen?
Yes, so we, of course, at Eloise, you know, we've always taken security 100% seriously. Everybody will be screened through a metal walkthrough detector. We have three walkthrough metal detectors that will be stationed right out of the parking lot between the powerhouse and the asylum. So everybody will be screened when they come in. Nobody's allowed to bring bags. Nobody's allowed to bring any, anything bigger than a wallet, right? So they will walk in, go to the ticket booth that's directly right in front of the entranceway. They will present their ticket, they will get stamped. If they are of age to consume alcohol, they will get a wristband at that point. Once they have that wristband, that will allow them to get in the gated area, the secured area for where the alcohol is being served. Nobody under the age of 21 will be allowed in the area where liquor is being consumed and served. We have a total of 45 security guards at this event. We have five uniformed auxiliary sheriffs that will be onsite with two cars. We will have Star EMS, as usual, onsite with their rig and two paramedics. Everything will be gated off appropriately. Nobody will be allowed backstage. There will be vendors, different vendors there selling. We'll have a total of 15 food trucks. We will have different vendors selling different jewelry, different t-shirts. We're going to have a big screen up for the Lions game. We're going to be broadcasting the Lions game on a 100-inch LED screen. There'll be mobile bowling alleys there. There will be mobile video games there. We are going to be doing, it is an awards event for the cannabis industry. So this was held at the Russell Industrial Center for many years. Dennis Kalofalos of the Russell Industrial Center is not very welcome by the city of Detroit, so we actually stole this event from Detroit, which at Eloise, we're super excited about it, right? Because we want to do more events at our site. We have 17 acres that basically sits annually all year. And I'll be honest, I just paid the tax bill and it's, you know, it's, we need to generate more revenue because we have debt, we have taxes, we have insurance. And so we're very, very grateful to get this event. The organizer is Jen from Mean Red. She's a producer out of New York. She produces not only in New York, but Detroit. I just was in a meeting with her. They're planning out where they're going to set the stage. It's just going to be a great event for Westland, and I'm excited to bring many more concerts to our site and many more events of whether it's car shows, whether it's, whatever it is, you know? We were looking at the paranormal something, I can't remember what that is. But we're just really wanting to incorporate our site. And I don't know if anybody knows this, and I'd love to say it on record, that October 16th, our TV show is airing on Fox Nation. We have six episodes called Secrets of the Asylum that is strictly for the property of Eloise. It's the first paranormal TV show that's ever done on one property in the history of this, this different genre. So a lot of exciting things are happening, this being one of them. We are coming at this thing full force with all of our event staff, all of our security staff. They have subcontracted a professional security staff. So they have done, this will be their third event? Second?
This is the second.
They've done, and they've never had an incident at any of their events. So we are, you know, the motto at Eloise is always de-escalate, 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 de-escalate. We are not confrontational. Want you to have fun. So we're just trying to have another, another thing happening at Eloise, so.
Thanks, John. Thank you for explaining it a little bit more in depth and detail.
And it is not a consumption event.
I wanted to be very clear.
Yeah, very strict, yeah.
All right, is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Good luck, be safe.
Thank you.
I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much, you guys. I really appreciate it.
All right, we'll move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. Ruby Richards, I'm a Westland resident, and I'm also the secretary of the Western Wayne County NAACP. And I'm here to tell you about an event we have coming up. The Western Wayne County Freedom Fund Dinner is Sunday, October 15, 2023, at the Soho Banquet and Event Center at 34615 Warren Road in Westland, Michigan. The reception starts at 4:00 PM and the program starts at 5:00. You can go on our website to purchase tickets or table packages, and that's at westernwayncountyacp.com. Or I've left some flyers outside, you can go out there and you can scan the barcode. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Emily Baumann, resident. I appreciated that you guys had the study session today for explaining some of the ARPA, the allocation of the remaining $5 million. So I appreciate that you guys had the study session, and I know that there's an ongoing conversation. So I just, I just, I do want to make sure I know that you recognize that, you know, I sometimes sit there and say, I know that you guys probably feel like you sometimes have a thankless job and nobody's giving recognition, but I do want to thank the council for doing, you know, trying to do some of the things that we've asked them to do, and that is have study sessions and have it open to the public. So I love to see people there. I agree with some of the comments that we, you know, I wish more public, more of the public were going to these study sessions, and they were required to be in here as opposed to in that room. So I'm going to make this vocal that if there's people listening to this, please look on the calendar and come to the study sessions because there needs to be more input so that we are, so that you guys are hearing from us as well as, you know, you know, understand that this is, you know, it's not just the council deciding what to do, it's people sharing with the council, we would like you to do this. So I just want to know, I know it's a, it's a big job when you're not getting some of the appreciation. So that being said, I do have a couple of questions. And the first question is, I guess I want to understand how things get onto the, both onto the agenda, I'm going to look at the question on that, how do things get onto the agenda? And how do they get to the consent calendar? I just keep questioning that process because it feels like things end up on the consent calendar before there's ever any discussion for the public to even know about some of this stuff. And I guess I just want to get more information, both for myself as well as the community, to say if there's something that shows up on the consent counter, how do we ever get to say anything? And then how it shows up on the actual agenda? What's that process? Additionally, how are study sessions called? Can council members call study sessions? And how many council members are needed to call a study session? Or how do these things happen? And because I know that there are other study sessions that people are asking about and saying, well, why aren't we having a study session on this topic or this topic? So I guess I just want to make sure that that's being communicated, even if it's just so, you know, an educational perspective. I also want to go back to, I'm concerned that item two on the new business, there was no application in the packet that you provided to the public. There was no agenda item. Usually there's that agenda item that's like, you know, signed off by the mayor and things like that. I did not see that, so unless I missed it, I did not see that in the public packet. And there was nothing that, so there's all that, there was the adoption of the prepared resolution for item number one, but there was nothing for item number two in that document. There was some stuff in there for the consent, but not related to the new business item. So I guess I am concerned with that part that's not being communicated, and so you guys passed something and didn't have discussion on, you know, a lot of discussion on it. I do want to also say that I appreciate some of the questions as far as that goes. On the information online, I'm not seeing anything that says that there can't be consumption. Okay, there are vendors, and, but I do see nothing about consumption. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, your time is up. All right. Anybody on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Who's, at whose direction, whose idea was it to put a light south of the railroad tracks on Merriman? That is the worst idea in the world. The lights aren't synced. Traffic is backed up all the way to almost to Annapolis on most days. It's bad. But the traffic coming south on Merriman is flying through, just cooking on all four burners. Number two, y'all had more restrictions and more questions for them people for that Eloise thing than they have for Blues Brews and barbecue. I was high standing out there. So whether they smoke weed at this thing or not, it's not going to affect no neighbors. There's a golf course there. So I, I don't understand that. So this.
Thank you. Is anybody on my right? Anybody on my left?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, City Council. Kevin Coleman, State Representative, Westland. I just wanted to stop in tonight. Commissioner Glenn Anderson and I, from Wayne County, we're going to be having our coffee hours again this fall. The first one is next Monday, which is actually September 11th. It's at 9:00 AM at Homestead Kitchen right here off of Wayne Road. I want to invite anybody to come join us. We always like to have visitors, whether they be residents, business owners, elected officials. Everyone's welcome at our coffee hour. We'd love to have you there. 9:00 AM, Homestead Kitchen, September 11th. It's on Wayne Road in the same strip mall as Carlos Mexican Restaurant. I usually don't combine my, what I'm talking about with other questions, but I do have a question tonight for council members if they have the time. I was looking at the packet from the study session about the ARPA funding, and just as a taxpayer and homeowner, I wanted to know about the $3 million for the pool at John Glenn High School. That being a considerable amount of money and for taxpayers in the city to, you know, I know it's ARPA money, but it's still tax money. And for the city to be spending that amount of money on a pool, I'm just concerned about that. And I'm wondering what the motivation or how that got started, kind of, if we could get some more information on it, because the timeline, it looks like it's going to be coming up in October for approval. And I would just like to hear more feedback publicly. I know you had your study session, but that's not televised. So if we could get some information on that, I would appreciate it. And then last, I would just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to all the residents who supported me in the mayoral primary this year in August. I was one of the finalists and one of the winners of the primary, and I just want to say that I'm very honored to have earned some, that amount of votes. It means a lot to me. I love this city very much, but more than that, I love the people in it. And it, it just, I've got to say, I can't thank you enough for supporting me in that primary. So thank you very much. And then I just want to give out my phone number. Anybody who wants to contact me as our state representative, my cell phone number, 734-751-6321. Good night.
Right. So we are moving into election season, so I'll just kindly remind everybody to try and refrain from campaigning for the dais. So we, just, we'll just set it out there. So everybody. All right. Is there anybody on my right? Anybody else on my left? All right, we'll close citizen comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thanks, President Hart. Good evening, everyone. I want to start off by thanking everybody for being here tonight and also mention power outages. We've had a lot of power outages recently. The Michigan Public Service Commission is seeking public comment on the frequency of the power outages, and citizens are able to submit their comments for the commission to review. In a recent press release, they said, and I quote, "Today's actions of offering a straw proposal that ties financial metrics to the duration of outages and the number of customers experiencing multiple outages each year is a significant step towards that goal." The Public Service Commission Committee is seeking comments from shareholders, stakeholders on the preliminary straw proposal by 5:00 PM September 22nd. Then they will reply with comments by 5:00 PM on October 20th. Comments should reference case number U-21400. Comments may be mailed to Executive Secretary, Michigan Public Service Commission, P.O. Box 30221, Lansing, Michigan, 48909, or emailed to MPSCEdockets@michigan.gov. Comments may also be filed through the commission's e-docket system at case number U-21400. Instructions are available on the e-docket's website. And I have lost power on numerous occasions. Many of my council members have lost power, and I'm not trying to tee you up, Councilman McDermott, as he starts to type crazily. But this is our chance, right? This is our chance to really express our issues with the power outages and with the lack of transparency and the lack of accountability with DTE and some of the stakeholders that support them. So this is, this again, this is the Michigan Public Service Commission. Due to the extreme heat, I've made the decision to open up the H2O zone free for everyone on Labor Day. I'm glad I Glad I did that. It was actually packed all day. Every time I drove by, there were a lot of people out there, so I'm glad we did that. So we are offering free access also on September 9th and 10th to the H2O zone, but this time it'll be free to Westland residents only. You will need to show proof of residency. The Spray Park is open every Saturday and Sunday, the entire month of September, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, weather permitting. Daily passes can be purchased at the concession stand on site. Also want to mention, I know we talked a lot about parks in the subcommittee meetings or the study session, but the relocation of the Play Planet will be coming this month. And we will update the council on a groundbreaking ceremony in the public as well and next steps here pretty soon. Also, on September 9th and 10th, there will be a community-wide permit-free garage sale weekend. Any resident may have a garage sale or a yard sale with a normal permit fee being waived. The city will provide a free interactive map that will help get the word out to everyone that you are participating in this garage sale. You can register your sale on the city's website. I know the last one we did, we had a couple of rainouts and even on the rainout dates, we had rain. But people that absolutely, that still continue to do their sales were very thankful that we extended the garage sale. So we have another one coming up next weekend, September 9th and 10th. Also coming up on September 9th, Saturday, September 9th, is the Michigan Humane's Meet Your Best Friend at the Shelter Adoption Event. And we've talked previously about some adoption events. This is going to be a really, really, really big deal here in the city of Westland. So Michigan Humane's Berman Center for Animal Care in Westland will be having this adoption event on Saturday, September 9th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There will be more than 150 animals available for onsite adoption. If you're interested in adopting a pet, please bring a valid state-issued photo ID and leave your, leave your residents' pets at home. I know they like to participate, but I want to leave them home for this one. Each organization will have its own adoption requirement. And if you want more information, I think we have flyers in the lobby out here. You can also go to michiganhumane.org/pet-adsoption. This event is in partnership with Mike Morris Law Firm and Premier Pet Supply. We also have this information on our social media websites as well. The ARPA study session, I thought, I thought it was a great session. I'm really happy that the council subcommittee, it sounds like we got pretty good consensus to allocate over $1.25 million into our park system. It's a, it's something that was brought forward and discussed. It's going to help really modernize over nine of our parks citywide using one-time money. But overall, I'm very pleased with the work that you guys put in, the subcommittee. They line up with a lot of the administration's goals. And I thank you for your time, energy and effort you guys put into this. And then obviously, the rest of the council had a lot of great feedback as well tonight. New business, there's been a lot of new and upcoming commercial activity as well as reinvestments over the summer. Dougie's Ice Cream, Caesar's Flowers, Bittersweet Bakehouse, Optive Health and Ex-Way's Famous Chicken are all officially open for business. Additionally, Ross Dress, no pun intended. Ross Dress for less and a number of high-profile national tenants are currently working on plans to move into the Westbridge Shopping Center located directly across the street. So we're excited to see some of those vacancies filled with great tenants. We also anticipate some new restaurants such as Shish Kebab Express and McAllister's Deli in the next year. Starbucks, Starbucks was closed for a little bit there, but they did a $375,000 renovation project. RB's over on Wayne Road did a $500,000 remodel. Meyer down the street just is finishing up their $8.5 million upgrade. And the Dollar Tree on Vinoy is investing over $310,000 in their location. In terms of recruitment, our teams had a lot of interest from late from various users such as Flight Golf and Michaels. We look forward to announcing more developments here in the near future. Officer Kelly's in the audience. So A Day For You, sponsored by the Westland Police Department, will be happening on Saturday, September 16th at the Westland Police Department. The Westland Police Department is inviting those with special needs and their families for a special tour of the Westland Police Department. Tours will be held from 10:00 AM until 12:00 PM. And for those with sensory issues, there will be no lights and sirens and smaller group sizes. There will be additional tours from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM for those with no issues with lights and sirens. You must RSVP with Officer Kelly at mkelley@wlp.net. They'll have the K-9 Patrol, they'll have police motorcycles, police cars, investigations, and of course, face painting will be at the event. Our Board Member Fair and Reconnaissance Day is scheduled for October 12th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM here at Westland City Hall. We've sent letters to every board member and we'll send this information to council to share as widely as you can to help assist in finding new board commission members and to, to serve our community. We also hope that you'll attend to thank the current board members because we know it's a thankless job. So we hope that you'll, you'll come out and support that event. Keep an eye, an eye out for the State of the Date for my first annual State of the City address. I encourage you to attend to learn more about all the great things and my plans for the upcoming year to improve our city. Last but not least, as you can see, there's a lot of great things going on here in our city and my office is always here to serve you. So if anyone has any questions, comments, concerns, input, you can always call my office at 734-467-3200. Or you can email us at mayor@citywestland.com. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Usually I'm pretty quiet, so I think I owe you guys a couple of comments. Just, just one thing really. I heard some concern. And I just want to be very clear for the council that currently consuming marijuana in public is not allowed by ordinance. It's already prohibited. So if there was any concern about that, just know that that's already in the ordinance. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll begin council comments with Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm going to start off, I think this is fitting, is to invite everyone out to the Beer and Wine Festival, Saturday, September 6th at 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I thought that was kind of fitting with all the other stuff going on. There will be live music, food trucks and corn hoard there. I believe this is our second annual one and I think the first one was a blast. So it's not too late to get your ticket and come enjoy some beer and wine. I want to thank everyone that came out to the study session. You know, we worked really hard to accommodate, kind of, try to accommodate everyone in the city and bring everyone that brought their ideas and try to make that magic happen. So thank you, everyone that came out. Thank you for all the feedback. And thank you to Pro-Tim Rakowski for leading the way and McDermott as well. And I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goddard.
Thanks. At the last meeting, I mentioned that I had requested, along with two of my colleagues, studies, multiple study sessions on several topics. There were actually six. One of them, we, we had an hour long, a little over an hour on the ARPA funding. And our council president has now scheduled the other five topics for one study session on Saturday, September 16th. So in a four-hour timeframe, because our policies and procedures call for 10 to 2 on a Saturday study session, we're going to have a discussion on the Walk and Roll Program, the Civilian Oversight Board, the Marijuana Ordinance, the LOCC and the salaries of elected and appointed officials, and a Responsible Contracting Ordinance, all within that timeframe. I'm hopeful that we're going to have all of the appropriate directors that need to be in those study sessions there. Because basically, I'm looking at this as a box-checking exercise. You wanted a study session, here it is. We'll throw them all together and not have a meaningful discussion on any of them. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Move to Councilman McDermott.
Good evening and thank you, Council President. So a few things to talk about tonight. DTE will not be one of them, so I'll spare you that. First off, I want to thank our city employees and everybody who worked through the Labor Day holiday. We know that for some people, even though we, most of us have the day off, it's just another day at work. So to our public safety, our police and fire, any of our DPS crews that worked out there, thank you for working hard through the Labor Day weekend. Our Parks and Rec staff, the Park Rangers out there, thank you for working. And I really just want to say, you know, thank you to all the working-class men and women here in Westland for all you do each and every day. This year is a little extra special for those of you who are members of the United Auto Workers. We know that you have a big contract negotiation coming up with your President Sean Fain and the membership of the UAW. And I just want you to know that I stand in solidarity with the men and women of the UAW as you negotiate with the big three for not only better wages and benefits, but for an end of the tiered system, for an end of the temp employee system, which people are stuck on for three, four or five years at a time. So I really hope that, you know, President Fain can give it to the big three and get a fair contract for the workers this year with negotiations between Ford, GM, Stellantis and the UAW. So I'm certainly on the side of the auto workers on this one. In regards to the ARPA subcommittee study session tonight, really happy that we were able to have that finally. I think it was a, is a long time coming. Myself, Councilman Hornbuckle and Council President Pro-Tim Rakowski, put a lot of effort into that. And we put some extra effort in once we got some state funding back for our fire stations here. So we look forward to having continued input. If you came to tonight's meeting or if you didn't, nothing has been finalized, nothing has been voted on yet. We do plan on voting on each of the items individually so that all of us on council can decide what we like, what we don't like that came out of the subcommittee. And if you have more ideas that you want us to allocate funding towards, we did not spend all the money. We actually haven't spent any of the money yet because we still have to vote. So there is plenty of time to talk to all of us, myself or any one of us up here. If you have some other items or projects you'd like to see us invest in. So please do reach out to myself or any one of us or the mayor's office as well. We'd be happy to get your feedback on that. I did an ARPA survey myself that I just put out on my own council page back when we first got these ARPA funds. And one of the big things that residents really wanted to see was a recreation center with a pool. And while we're not doing the recreation center aspect of it, one of the things that we're looking to invest in is the pool aspect of it. We know that many people use the Bailey Center and the outdoor pool that the city used to have. And now we don't have a public pool anymore. And that's been a big request that we've heard time and again from residents. So as a part of the ARPA subcommittee, one of the things that we are exploring is partnering with Wayne Westland Community Schools and expanding on at John Glenn for a potential public pool, aquatics area, sauna and locker rooms and showers. It's not finalized. Don't want to make any promises on that yet. We, as a council, still have to vote on those things. We'll see pending a vote how that goes. But I'm super excited about that because I've gotten, in the survey that I put out for residents to take, that was one of the number one things. And then when the city did its official survey as a part of the Marshall Plan, people wanted a pool. It was overwhelming that they wanted it. And we are trying to heed your call on that and go for the pool. I will agree on the study sessions coming up on Saturday. Don't get me wrong, I'm really happy to finally, after four years of asking, have a study session on a Community Oversight Board. I'm super happy to have worked with Council President Pro-Tim Rakowski on the Responsible Contracting Ordinance and to have discussion time on that, the LOCC, the Walk and Roll. But I mean, we're going to be blitzing through, what, half hour, 45 minutes on each of these topics. And certainly, many of these topics require more nuanced conversation and longer conversation. So this better be, and I hope it is, the first of many study sessions to discuss a Citizen Oversight Board, to discuss the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, to discuss reopening our, making amendments to our Marijuana Ordinance, to the LOCC and Director Pay Plans and to the Walk and Roll Program, which we put a heck of a lot of money in. And we had a lot of community meetings over the Walk and Roll. And we had 10 community meetings over the Marijuana Study Session. So if we can have 10 over Marijuana, if we can have, you know, a handful of meetings on the Walk and Roll Program and put a lot of money into that program, working with, with OHM, I think that we can get more than half hour, 45 minutes on a Saturday to discuss all these various topics. But with that said, I encourage everybody to come out on Saturday, the 16th at 10:00 AM here at City Hall. Bring your ideas, bring your thoughts on, on these topics. I'd like to see as many of you as possible in the community come out on these very important topics. I think these are really crucial issues that we're going to be discussing. And hopefully in the future, we can get more time than just the allotted half hour, 45 minutes, whatever it's going to be per, per topic on Saturday, the 16th. And I certainly hope to see many of you out there as well. And then in regards to the light that was put in front of the train tracks on Merriman Road, I do believe that was a county light that was put in by Wayne County. So I can certainly reach out to our Commissioner Glenn Anderson. But I know exactly what you're talking about. On one side, they're all going through over the tracks. And on the other side, everybody's at a dead stop. So I certainly understand that. And as always, if you need anything from me, I'm available on my cell phone at 734-890-2146 or on my Facebook page at Councilman Mike McDermott. Or you can always email me at mmcdermit@citywestland.com. And bid you all a good evening and hope to see somebody out there, as my colleague mentioned, at the Craft Beer and Wine Festival here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. I hope everyone's doing well and enjoying their summer. I spent this weekend at Burning Bush International Ministries. They had a great Back to Wellness Day. And they were giving out backpacks and they were doing some wellness screenings, which I thought was great. So I appreciate Bishop Shelby and Lady Shelby and Edith, who are at Burning Bush. And they welcomed me and they were really doing a great job with, with getting the community involved. They had DJs out there and it was a great event. So. So I did that this weekend in addition to going to Vinyl People Records. They had an ice cream social and Labor Day event. So I was able to get some Christmas gifts and a new business here in Westland. It was, it was pretty, I mean, I think it was busy for the most part. It was pretty steady. And I was able to support a local business. So it's a great time. So I think our study sessions went really well. There was just a few topics that I was concerned about. I brought this up at the study session as well, too. I know that it was mentioned about the parks. And I think that there's some questions about how we're going to replace some of these equipments. And then also like the maintenance cost, too. So if we're replacing them, what, what does that maintenance look like? So I think we are exploring that. In addition to looking, let me just put this up really quick. Arts and Culture. So I had brought up the question, too, about some of the proposals that we received doesn't really have a lot of information and breaking down what the money we would allocate and what it goes for. So I'd asked questions about possibly getting some presentations to us before we make that final call. And then there was a question, too, about fund balance on the library, so Chromebooks. So there's $20,000 that had been allocated for some Chromebooks. And it was brought up by one of our residents, too, about, you know, how does, what does this look like for those on the South End? Which I agree, you know, I think it's sometimes hard to get to the library, depending on where you're at in Westland. So perhaps it's a split between Jefferson Barnes or the library. So I think there's, there's open discussion on that. One of the things, too, I've always been talking about, which I'm still not giving up on it, is a sports dome or a sports complex or somewhere where our children can come and train. Michigan is a cold-weather state. So much of the year, they have no spot for indoor training or workout. Obviously, we have a lot of gyms. We all know that. But the training in that turf area is very limited in our, in our city. So I'm still not giving up on it. I'm looking at administration. But a sports dome has always been on my list. It's something I've talked about for probably 10 years when, when sports domes started to become popular. But I still think it's really important for, you know, our, our athletes and those young children to, to just have an area where they can go. So I'm hopeful that we'll still explore that, but that was on my list. And I know it is expensive to build, but I'm hoping that we'll, we'll still be able to explore that option. And then on September 16th, so it was brought up about our study session. And we do hold our budget sessions in very similar fashion. So there's quite a bit of presentations that go through that day. It's very effective. We cover a lot of information. I think if we do run out of time, we can schedule another session. I think these, all of these topics are very important. So we'll continue to explore and start to look at other options in terms of, you know, if we need to expand out. Just a reminder, too, that it was Labor Day, obviously, so trash is delayed by one day. So I saw a couple of questions online for individuals. Is trash delayed? Yes, it is delayed. And then our mayor, Londo, had mentioned A Day For You. Margie Kelly, Officer Kelly, brought this up to me and said, can you talk about this? She called me earlier. But just a reminder, my, my brother, who has special needs, had, had actually been attending this. So this is, I think, the fifth, fifth annual? Okay. Fifth annual. He went a few, he's been a few times and he really loves it. So they have the police cars out there, the police motorcycles, the face painting. They had food and some giveaways. They do it in a smaller group setting. So it's great for individuals that maybe crowds throw them off. And please RSVP. So she had asked me if, to just remind people, please, please RSVP if you need that sensory tour. So just a reminder, mkelley@wlpd.net is for the sensory tour. So please, please, please register for that. Just a reminder, our farmers market's going on. I'll continue to plug this because it is still going on. So Thursday, September 7th, from 3:00 to 7:00. You can come out to Central City Park. So great way to support our local vendors. And then we had already mentioned craft beer. And I just wanted to wish all the kids and support staff and all those that are going back to school a very successful year. I mentioned this last time. I did send my son back, who's a junior in high school. But I know a lot of kids went back today. So hopefully, it's a successful year. So, hopefully, it's a successful year. And I posted this on my Councilwoman Melissa Sampe page. I just wanted to read this, because I feel sometimes, you know, even adults can be bullies, too. So, this is what I put. "To all students returning to school, if you see any of the following, another student struggling to make friends, another student being picked on, a student who is new, shy, or not in the in-crowd, a student who is eating lunch alone. Be a leader, be a warrior. Say hi, smile at them, ask if you can sit with them, include them. You never know what that person is facing inside and outside school." So, just a gentle reminder of all those that maybe need it as well, too. Our next meeting is on the 18th at 7:00. I hope to see residents out at our next meeting. If you need to reach me, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe is my personal Facebook page. Everyone be safe and kind with each other.
Thank you. Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Nothing this evening, but there was a couple of questions that didn't get answered. One was, how does something get on our agenda versus the consent calendar? So, the President obviously puts items on our agenda. Three council members can get together, put an item on the agenda. The difference between the consent calendar and the agenda item, I think, is at your discretion.
Correct.
The President's discretion. And the same goes for a study session. How many council members call a study session? It's three. We all have to get together, sign something, I'll send an email, ask the council president, and that's how we did it for this study session coming up on October 16th. And then, it was also mentioned about $3 million for a pool. It's actually 1.5 million for the pool at John Glenn, and that's not set in stone. I'm not sure which way I'm gonna vote on that yet next month. Yes, a lot of people in the community did want a pool, but from what I'm hearing here is that it won't be able to be used during schooltime. There's gonna be some time for senior citizens. That leaves a very short window for families and whoever else might want to use the pool. So, I think there's definitely a lot of research that still needs to be done on these items, as was mentioned on some of the items. So, I would ask that the Subcommittee, if you guys could post this on social media or something, just so we can share it around with people who might have questions or just want to see what we're looking at, that would be appreciated. I was hoping to see more of a sports dome, more of sidewalk connectivity. We're only gonna be doing one area with new sidewalks, so, you know, I think it was mentioned at the study session that all these items together for the ARPA funds lacks of vision. I do kind of see that some of this stuff needs to get done. I'm really glad we're gonna be voting on these items individually, because I'm definitely gonna be no on at least a couple of them. So, if anybody has any questions, you can reach out to me at (734) 578-3412, and I'll see you all at the upcoming study sessions.
Thank you. Pro Tem Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to thank everybody for their input during the Subcommittee Study Session, and I look forward to receiving your feedback, so we can continue to move forward with all of that. So, I was on the way to school with my son and noticed our friends, the orange barrels, are back on Wayne Road. So, I got on the phone today with the Wayne County Road Commissioner, and this is some of the updates that I have for our area. So, we'll start on Wayne Road between Palmer and Cherry Hill. They have September 16th slated as for when that should be opening, so that'll be nice. The bridge work over Heinz Drive on Inkster Road is in final design phase, so it does not have a groundbreak date yet, but it's probably gonna be happening once Merriman is completed. And then, those barrels that are out on Wayne Road right now are for resurfacing. It's for a resurfacing project between Joy to Plymouth Road, and that's supposed to start September 11th. So, they are supposed to do the bridge over Tonkish Creek. That's what I was afraid when I saw the barrels, I was like, oh, they're gonna block both of the roads. But they're not gonna start that project until the Merriman Road Bridge is completed, and it's quite delayed. So, I don't foresee that happening this year. They had November 23rd as a possible start date, but from the conversation that I had this afternoon, they said we can't close the Wayne Road until Merriman's all the way done. So, there were some significant delays, there is some infrastructure that they weren't aware of, like sewer lines and different things like that. And then, of course, we all experienced the weather, so there was flooding, and that obviously makes a challenge when you're, you know, doing construction on Heinz Drive, which is our flood plain. So, just thought you might appreciate a little bit of an update. I've gone ahead and scheduled to be read in on all of our road construction every two weeks, so I'm looking forward to that information. I've also been invited to participate with SMART about enhancing our Ninkin Transit ticketing system. Currently, we're pretty much a cash basis transportation company or entity, but there is other ways of doing that, so that would enable riders to be able to charge a card, similar to what they do in other subway and, you know, other transportation areas. So, that would be a wonderful improvement in our Ninkin Transit, and it'd be a lot safer for a lot of our riders and convenient for their families to, you know, might be in charge of their finances as a caregiver. Other than that, I'd like to invite you to the Bova VFW 9885 on September 15th, as we recognize POW MIA Day. The ceremony will begin at 6:00 p.m. So, with that, I wish you a good evening and a great next two weeks, and we'll see you at the study session.
Thank you, Pro Tem, and thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. So, some questions, I'm gonna try and be, try to summarize as much as I can. So, Councilman Hersberg kind of addressed the agenda, so it was on my list. So, the agenda's a funny thing, it all kind of depends on who it comes from, right? So, but on a high level, every other Monday or off Monday, the in-between Mondays, so next Monday, council leadership, which is Pro Tem Rukowski and I, sit with the mayor and the chief of staff, and they present their agenda items that they have from their administration. So, it could be, you know, from Mo, who has something the council has to consider for a bill, and anything that comes through his administration, he presents. If it comes from the council, then the council, they would move an agenda, they legislate, so they would move a bill, if you would, or something item forward to myself. I copy that to the clerk, and we move that forward. I do send that to the attorney whenever it comes in to make sure that the attorney gives a cursory review over it, and then, we can put it on the agenda as well. When it comes from a petitioner, which doesn't happen too often, but say, a neighborhood block party, right? So, the petitioner, they usually just email me, "Council President, how do I do this?" I says, "Well, put it in writing, put something together, send it to the clerk's office." The clerk's office then sends it to me, copies the administration, and we kind of work on it in tandem. So, I ask the administration, "All right, this is from the petitioner, please send it over to the attorney, make sure there's nothing in there that we should be worried about." They do their review, and then, when we sit down at the leadership meeting, we look at that item and say, "All right, everything's good to go," and then, we'll move it forward to the agenda. With regards of where things are on the agenda, so when we sit down, we go through all the items. The following day, Tuesday, the clerk's department forwards me that agenda with the administration's recommended kind of list. Some things are in a consent calendar, some things are on new business. And at that time, I confer with my colleague in the Pro Tem, and we decide, "All right, let's put this on new business, move this forward." So, that's how the consent calendar works. And the consent calendar is, as you know, is designed to just kind of take procedural things and keep the meeting moving along. But if there's any time, anything ever, any council member wants to move something off the agenda, you'll notice when we talk about the consent calendar, because there's no discussion on a consent calendar, right? But I ask, "Are there any changes to the consent calendar?" I look to my right, and I look to my left. If there are any changes, they made changes. And I think Councilman Hersberg did one at the last meeting, he moved something off, it got moved to new business, and then, the council, go ahead and look at that as a new business item. So, that's how that gets put together. I hope that was clear enough. With regards to study session, kind of the same thing. It's all a function of where it comes from. A lot of times, the mayor or the administration will move over a study session item, maybe they have an update for us. Aubrey Berman might have an update with economic development, they want to have a study session for it. Joanne Campbell has to sit with us at least twice a year and talk about CDBG and home. So, that would come through the administration to me, and this is a study session request, which the administration has kind of lined up all their dates, and we kind of figure out a date that works, make sure it's not in conflict with anything else in the schedule. Blues Brews BBQ, another event here, another event there, and we try to go ahead and put it in, so it works for everybody. If the council sends me one, like this most recent one, it was an awful lot. So, they sent me an email, they wanted a study session on these, a number of items, and I wanted to make sure, and I had a really short window, it said 30 days. So, I really wanted to make sure that I can get them out there and meet their requests, but also try and fit it in the schedule. That was an awful lot going on for an awful lot of directors, so the only way we could accommodate that is to get it done at first on a Saturday, and yeah, the time is tight. But now, if we come out of that, if there's other things we have to schedule, happy to do that, so we can dive deeper into some other items. But I wanted to be respectful of my colleagues' requests that they put in writing. It's my job, I have to do that, and I'm happy to do that, and that's my charge. So, yeah, that's why it's on that Saturday, that's why it's early, but we're doing the best we can to accommodate their request, and then, we'll be able to do some more things after that. And they can go ahead and ask me to do that, and we'll move them forward. I just have to make sure that all the parties that need to be there can be there. So, and so, like I said, when Aubrey schedules a study session, Aubrey presents. When Mo schedules a study session, I turn it over to Mo. Mo presents, and so, and finance the same thing, so on and so forth. So, I hope that clarified that. The last one was all the questions about consumption. The reason why I asked is because some people really had some concerns about consumption, and our ordinance does not allow that. So, I wanted to be very clear that they weren't going to do consumption, because there were concerns about that. So, I wanted to make Mr. Hambrik here and the other gentleman on record saying they're not doing an open consumption event, because that is not allowed. And there was some conception that, in the public, that, hey, they're having a consumption event, and we can't do that, so that's why I was asking those questions. Yeah, I don't drill Blues Brews and BBQ as much, but I guess a couple of people are walking around. It's illegal, you know, but I don't want everybody thinking that this event, it's an open consumption, because it just wasn't allowed. So, I hope that answered your question. The pool got answered, the traffic light got answered by Councilman McDermott, I believe, yep. And I think Glenn Anderson is having a coffee event with state representative soon, so if you can also circle around with him and ask him about that light as well. Let me know what he says, all right? I got caught by that light. And you did as well? Okay.
No. I mean, I know the answer to it.
All right.
I sent it to you.
Yeah. So, that's it in a nutshell. So, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank you for the study session today. Thank you for the Subcommittee. That was a really big lift, an awful lot of stuff. So, their charge was, when the, geez, if we can go back, I mean, we had the charrette, if you would, all the big input, everybody, we had a million things on the wall, right? And then, when the council sat down again and really talked about the balance, we had, what, 5.4 million roughly, loose math, 5.4 million, and the council put together their wish list, and it was 29 million, 30 million. So, I haven't mastered the art of my Lord and Savior. I cannot turn five loaves and two fish to feed a multitude, but the Subcommittee did what they could to spread it out as much as they can, and they came with their recommendations today. And the input for that process was the spreadsheet that all council put together for them to work on. So, a couple of other things came up today, that's cool, and I think the Subcommittee is gonna delve into that a little bit more, and I think the Subcommittee is gonna be working with individual council members, try and get a little bit more feedback, and then, look forward for what they're gonna present to us in the future. But thank you again for all the work the Subcommittee's done. It's a big lift, so you should be pleased with your work. I know sometimes it feels thankless, but I am thankful, so thank you so much, and I do appreciate it. With that, is our motion to adjourn.